All the August 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order. If we would all stand. Commissioner Goodkind, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. And to the flag which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Planner, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, good evening. Chairperson Rosales.
Present.
And Vice Chair Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Busk.
Here.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Custer indicated she would be absent tonight.
Commissioner Crayhill. Commissioner Crayhill here.
Commissioner Goodkind.
Present.
So you have six out of seven, with all six in the chambers tonight.
Great, thank you. Continuing with the agenda, do we have any matters from the public on any items that is not on the agenda, any desire to speak to any items?
No communications from the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. That takes us to approval of the minutes, item three from the July 27th meeting. Unless I hear any input from the other commissioners, I will assume that we're good with these minutes and go ahead with approval. Not seeing any input, consider those minutes approved. Consent calendar and transportation items, we don't have anything on the agenda, so we'll move to public hearings. Item four is consideration of conditional use permit, a waiver of locational requirements to allow medical cannabis manufacturing facility on Ordway. The applicant is Left Coast LLC. We have a staff presentation, but before we do that, if we could start with disclosures, Commissioner Morrissey.
I'm familiar with the area and read the material.
Thank you. Commissioner Busk?
The same.
Commissioner Goodkind.
Site visit, read the materials and received communication from the public.
Thank you. And Commissioner Crayhill?
I spoke with the licensee back when this was originally scheduled, or the applicant when this was originally scheduled to come to us, haven't spoken with them since then. And my parents live in Peacock Hills, but not really in any kind of zone or haven't...
Great, thank you. And this is an item that was continued from July 13th. And then Vice Chair Balma.
I also did a site visit and read a lot of the staff report and a lot of the emails, of which we have received a ton as we got here today, which I haven't really gone through every one, one of them yet.
I do have the same disclosures. I drove by the site actually today, read the staff report. And City Planner, if I could ask, the materials that we received today, is this in addition to what was received otherwise electronically, or is this the entire package of comments?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'll defer to Stephanie Savantes, the planner for this project.
Okay. With that, then we'll go ahead. Stephanie, if you'd like to do your presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Savantes, and I will be presenting Conditional Use Permit 19-00020 for Left Coast at 1629 Ordway. The project's site is near Oceanside Boulevard on Ordway. The project's site is located, is zoned limited industrial and has a general plan designation of light industrial. The site is surrounded by limited industrial zoning to the east, north, and west, and residential zoning to the south. This is an aerial of the site indicating the site as well as the surrounding area. The project is requesting approval of a conditional use permit and waiver of locational requirements to operate a medical cannabis manufacturing facility. The project would divide the existing building and Left Coast would occupy about 6,400 square feet in the southern portion. The existing building is being used for steel fabrication, and Left Coast would build out the interior to meet state and local requirements to operate as a manufacturing facility. The business is not allowed direct onsite sales to the public. The project is required to obtain a waiver of locational requirements as the site is within 150 feet from a residential district, 350 feet from a church, and 550 feet from a massage establishment. Those distances are measured as the crow flies. However, building to building, the site is about 370 feet from the nearest residential structure, and that structure is about a mile and a half away via pedestrian path. The closest residential use is to the northwest, and that is about a third of a mile via pedestrian path. Both the church and the massage establishment are located on Oceanside Boulevard, and the proposed site is screened from Oceanside Boulevard by another industrial building. Here is a site plan for the proposed business. As you can see, they will only occupy the southern portion of that building. Here is a close-up of the floor plan. The proposed medical cannabis manufacturing facility will operate completely within the existing building. The facility will utilize air filtration systems, and the building will be negatively pressurized to prevent air and odor leaks. As the manufacturing use of facility will not generate any additional traffic in the industrial area. Staff believes that the proposed use will not constitute an over-concentration of regulated uses or impacts the sensitive uses nearby. The facility will not be detrimental to the surrounding area, and the location of the proposed business will not constitute a land use incompatibility. The facility is required to secure a state license from the California Department of Public Health, Manufactured Cannabis Safety Branch, and utilize the track and trace system. The facility is also required to obtain an annual local license from the city. Left Coast originally obtained a license in May of 2019, and a 2020 renewal has been granted for the facility. The applicant conducted a community meeting on January 24th of this year to comply with the City Council enhanced notification policy. That mailer and sign-in sheet for that meeting were provided as attachments to the staff The city has received a total of 40 individual comment, I'm sorry, 40 comments from individuals as of 5:15 today. Twenty-three of those comments were in opposition, and 17 of those were in support of the project. 16 of those have been asked to be read or played for the record, and I will do so during the public comment portion of the hearing. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of the Class One categorical exemption, and recommend approval of the conditional use permit and waiver of locational criteria. I am available for questions. The applicant has also prepared a presentation for the commission in our available via conference line.
Thank you, Stephanie. Looks like we have at least one question for you. Go ahead, Commissioner Goodkind.
Thank you, Stephanie. Could you explain why the city changed its recommendation?
Commissioner Goodkind, at the time that this May hearing was scheduled, the city had not made a final determination on the local license for the applicant. After that, the city did make a final determination of the local license renewal for the applicant, and it was granted. So at that time, in the May hearing, one of the reasons for denial was that the local license had not been secured.
Thank you. Has the city verified that the applicant has a license for manufacturing from the Bureau of Cannabis Control?
So, the city has been in communications with the state staff regarding their license. It is our understanding that the facility cannot obtain that license until they have completed the tenant improvements required to meet the state licensing requirements.
Thank you. And my final question right now is, on what basis can the city override the CCNRs of a private building association?
I will let the city attorney's office answer that.
Commissioner Goodkind and Commissioners, it's not necessarily an override of the CCNRs. Those are still intact, it's just that the, and the members of the association who still have standing to enforce those CCNRs, it's a, we just see it as it's a separate matter. The city's not necessarily overriding it by approving this.
Commissioner Crayhill.
Just, and I have a pretty good sense of this, but for everybody's edification, are you able to provide any kind of description of some of the nearby industrial uses, some of the other tenants nearby, what maybe they manufacture, or the nature of their businesses are?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Some of the neighboring suites, other buildings in the industrial area, what are some of their activities generally?
Yes. There's the steel fabrication that's right next door, they'll be taking over a portion of that. There's a lot of different types of manufacturing in that facility. There's also some more office-like uses in that facility as well, in that complex, I should say.
Commissioner Busk?
Two questions. First, do you know if the welding facility, which actually is in the same building, it appears, is that welding facility going to continue in that building?
So, Commissioner Busk, Commissioners, it is my understanding that that facility, they have submitted a local license for distribution of cannabis to be in that other portion of the building. They hope to continue through that process and submit a conditional use permit for cannabis distribution.
So when that happens, the welding facility will go away?
Yes, entirely.
Okay. And then the second question is, as I read through all this material, it's never stated, but it appears that these people already started a business in that facility, and then were forced by the state to shut down, and now they're going through the process of getting all the correct permissions to do business the right way. Is that true?
Commissioner Busk, Commissioners, yes. So, planning department usually when we get a code violation or someone operating illegally, our main goal is to bring them into compliance. So with this facility, that is something that occurred, and this planning department, our mission was to get them into compliance.
So they did have a business there illegally, and now this is to bring them into compliance? Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of on Commissioner Goodkind's questions, as far as the CCNRs go, and also the other businesses, I know, before I got here, I read a lot of the comments that were from businesses in the park that were very much against and opposed to it. Do you know on the ones that you gave us tonight, because I haven't gone through all of them, how many maybe of those were actual business owners that are located in the park that are opposed to this?
Commissioner Balma, Commissioners, I did not do that sort of analysis of those comments that were submitted.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I had one question, and let me go back to the Commissioners, there's a remaining one. It has to do with the license that was secured by the applicant. It says they need to renew it annually. Do you know anything about that licensing? Is it, that doesn't seem to be a very secure status on their part? How easy is it to get it renewed every year? And is there a point where maybe they get it and it lasts for five years? And I'm not looking out for the applicant, I'm just curious about that licensing process.
Commissioner Rosales, are you referring to the state license or the local license?
Either or, if you want to tackle either one.
So, regarding the state license, I don't know all the details, but regarding the local license, that is an annual renewal that's required by the municipal code.
Okay. And maybe the applicant can touch on that. Any other questions from the Commissioners before we go to the applicant? Thank you, Stephanie. Seeing none, I understand the applicant would like to do a presentation.
Do we have the applicant on the phone as we queue up the presentation?
This is Tamara Latham here. I'm the attorney for the applicant. My understanding is we had submitted a pre-recorded presentation that I believe Mr. Vontas was going to queue up.
Yes, we're doing that. I just wanted to get your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Jonathan Landis. I'm still helping them.
Good evening. My name is Gina Austin, and along with Alex Colmertes and Colton Barity, the applicants, we would like to provide some additional detail regarding this project. While this presentation was previously recorded, we are available by phone after the presentation for questions.
Lastly, Joshua Sigler with Access3 Architects also.
Okay, any others? Because we're going to start the presentation now. Okay, thank you. We're going to start the presentation. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Good evening. My name is Gina Austin, and along with Alex Colmertes and Colton Barity, the applicants, we would like to provide some additional detail regarding this project. While this presentation was previously recorded, we are available by phone after the presentation for questions. As staff mentioned, the project is located at 1629 Ordway. Our office submitted a letter of support, and I will not reiterate all of the detail that we previously provided to you in writing. However, I would like to give you a greater understanding of who Left Coast is, and provide some additional support for the location waiver. Left Coast is owned by experienced operators, Alex and Colton. They have been operating legally compliant cannabis businesses since 2014, and currently operate another manufacturing facility in La Quinta. There is a letter of recommendation from the Assistant City Manager of La Quinta attached as Exhibit C to the letter of support that we submitted for this project. At this location, Left Coast intends to begin with packaging of concentrates and flour, and prepare those products for shipment by a licensed distributor to a lab for testing, and ultimately to a licensed retail facilities. Left Coast would not participate at this time as the licensed distributor, but as they continue to execute on their business plan, ultimately hope to have a distribution CUP at this same premises location within the same footprint. And at that point in time, they would operate it as a fully integrated manufacturer and distributor. At this point in time, this application is only for the manufacturing, so the packaging of the concentrates and the flour, to send them out to a distributor. We agree with staff that all of the CUP findings and location waiver findings can be made. However, we'd like to provide some additional detail with regard to the location waiver. As staff mentioned, St. Margaret's Catholic Church is located on the other side of Oceanside Avenue, less than 1,000 feet as a crow flies. However, from door to door, through the path of travel, St. Margaret's Church is approximately 1,200 feet from door to door. Here is a slide from Google Earth showing the approximate path of travel. Google Earth is close, but not exact. In the letter that you received from this office, you will have Exhibit C, which shows an architect's drawing of the path of travel, which is right about 1,200 feet. So there's about a 50-foot difference between the two, but either way, over 1,000 feet between door to door. Here are some Google Earth photos from the parking lot of St. Margaret's. As you can see, the project building can't even be seen from the church parking lot. It is behind the building that you can see here in this photo. In addition, Left Coast will not be open on some days when the church is generally most As noted by staff, a second waiver request is related to the residential zones south of the proposed project. A direct route would require crossing of a ravine, the sprinter tracks, and the chain-link fence. The pedestrian path of travel to access the closest residence, however, is approximately 1.7 miles. On this top photo in this slide is a view from the street looking at the project building towards the residential zone. So you can see if you look down this path, the project building is on the right, and then down at the end, over the tracks and down the ravine, is the residential zone. The bottom photo on this slide is a close-up of that ravine and sprinter tracks and chain-link fence. And these natural topographical barriers are consistent with the types of barriers that have previously justified the granting of a locational waiver for a cannabis business in Oceanside. As such, all the findings for the waiver of location requirements can be met. Project is located in the correct zone, it's not open to the public, and it's not in conflict with the neighboring zoning. As an existing industrial building that is simply changing the type of industrial activity that will occur inside the building, it will not promote blight or negatively impact development or revitalization. All of the findings for the location waiver can be made, and we ask that you support staff's recommendation to approve the project. I thank you for your time this evening, and Alex, Colton, and I are available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant, by the Commissioners, they are on the phone, so they're able to take any questions? Yeah, Vice Chair Balma?
I do have a question, because a lot of this controversy with your project has to do with the Business Park Business Association, the CCNRs, and some of the people that actually have businesses there. What have you done to communicate your operation and maybe put them into more of a positive light, or have you?
I couldn't hear which Commissioner that was. This is Tamara Latham, the attorney for the applicant. As far as attempting to work with the association, we have done that. We've written letters and exchanged correspondence. We have not reached any kind of a determination with them or a conclusion with them, but it is a civil matter, and it is something that the applicant would continue to work through in the process of working with the association.
Okay, thank you. And any other questions from Commissioners?
I have a couple.
Commissioner Busk is applicant, we have Commissioner Busk, has a question for you.
So, a couple of questions. It appears that this is, in essence, a two-part application. This is part one, and then we can anticipate you're going to come back sometime in the future with part two, which is a request to allow distribution out of the front part of the same building. Is that true?
That is correct. Oh, sorry. On burbles, don't come out over the phone. This is Tamara Latham, the attorney for the applicant. Right now, we are on the manufacturing portion of the CUP application, which is before the commission this evening, and at some point in the future, we would be asking the city to also then consider a distribution application.
So the real question is, what happens if the distribution portion is not approved? Does your business plan then go bad? Do we have to worry about a business plan being bad because we don't approve the entire thing, one piece at a time?
I understand your question, Commissioner, and I would say no, before the commission tonight is only the manufacturing application, and we are asking you to make the findings to approve that project. So if we were then to come to the commission for the distribution portion of the application, you would then have the ability to consider that, but if, for whatever reason you determine you cannot make the findings, we would still then have that manufacturing application, which is predicated on the manufacturing business plan. And I hope I answered your question.
Well, not quite, but we can come back to it later. The other question I have is, what volatiles are you using for the extractions?
This is a non-volatile application, so they will not be doing any volatile extraction in that facility.
The blueprints I read says there's a volatile room in the facility.
To my knowledge, again, it's a non-volatile application, so if the plans talk, I have their architect here on the phone, and if he wants to weigh in on that, I can certainly have him assist me with that.
That would be helpful.
Go ahead, sir.
This is Josh Sigler from Access3 Architects. The C1D1 room is a non-volatile room, and only requires a three-hour rated wall assembly, that's all. Non-volatile.
So what are you using for extraction? Water? Pressure? What's the extraction medium?
Yes, that's correct.
You have to use something for extraction, right?
He indicated water, was he?
So it's water?
I think that I would maybe could add to that, if that's all right. Just for understanding volatile, oh, this is Alexandria, the applicant. Volatile extraction is when the use of a hydrocarbon such as butane is used for extraction. We are a non-volatile, which is used for extraction, and that would be considered something like ethanol. I hope that, I hope that we, as a team, were able to answer that.
So your extraction medium will probably be ethanol?
That would be the, I believe, I have double-checked with Tamara, but I believe that would be the only extraction variable that could be used if we extract.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Goodkind has a question for you, applicant?
Good evening, applicant. This is Commissioner Robin Goodkind, and my question for you is going back to the CCNR issue with the building association. If your project gets approved by the city, will you move forward with implementation prior to having that civil question resolved with the association?
This is Tamara Latham for the applicant, and I believe I heard your question. I have a little bit of feedback on my phone. I think what you asked me is, would the applicant pursue its building, its build-out without resolution with the association? And I would hope that those could work in conjunction. I have dealt with these things before in the past, and typically, the applicant does proceed with, you know, their work with the city and the tenant improvements and all those things while we work in conjunction with the association. So they would run parallel, I would presume, hopefully to meet some kind of an amicable resolution rather than something that ends up in the courts.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other questions, applicant, from the Commissioners, so I will turn it over to staff again for the public input. Stephanie, you were going to, I think, play a number of recorded responses or input from the public? Go right ahead.
Commissioner Rosales, thank you. To answer your previous question regarding the packet that you did receive today, there was one comment that was mistakenly left out that came in September of last year, but all the comments you received hard copy did come in over the weekend or today.
Thank you.
All right, and I will start reading comments, and once I'm done reading the comments, I will play the voicemails. In 30 years, I have, sorry, this comment is from Joanne Allen on Maple Drive. "In 30 years, I have adjusted to North Road becoming a noisy racetrack, the industrial estate, and the sprinter, but I am not prepared to have a CMP added to the list. I am all for progress, but please do not approve this permit. Enough is enough." Thank you. "To whom it may concern, I have lived..." Oh, that was part of the same comment, sorry. "I have lived in the Four Seasons neighborhood for 30 years. When I bought the house, North did not go through to Emerald. The sprinter was a twinkle in the eye, and I had a field behind the house. Progress is a great thing; change, although not our favorite, is inedible. I like my location, convenient to all great neighborhoods, and a house that has raised a family. I hate the noise level that has increased with the opening of Emerald to North and the maniacs that drive it, but I'm an Oceanside girl and don't want to leave the area. The sprinter blends into the background for the most part, and the business park is great for bringing in revenue for the city. The request for a conditional use permit for Left Coast LLC, however, I ask you, is that the revenue we want? How do I know what this means? Is my house going to smell of pot now in addition to being loud? I didn't buy a house next to an industrial park. The industrial park was built next to me. It's not like buying a house near an airport and complaining about the noise of planes. This all comes in after I arrived. I count on the city of Oceanside to make appropriate choices for the city and the well-being of its residents. People have the right to choose if they want to consume, and there are many medical medicinal benefits, and a lot of folks taking advantage. I do not want to be taken advantage of. Please do not..." Please do not disclose to my home and family. I appreciate your time and request the denial of the permit request for Left Coast LLC. Sincerely, Joanne Allen." I am an owner and a home of a home nearby. I do not approve of this conditional request because it is not consistent with the general plan. Cannabis has an adverse impact in harmless uses located close to neighborhoods and schools, inadequate off-street parking or loading, overflow of cars into the immediate residential neighborhood. I am writing to you as the owner of a residential home located within 1,100 feet from an industrial building that is requesting the conditional use permit. The applicant for the conditional use permit, CUP 19-00020, is applying for a permit to operate as a medical cannabis manufacturing facility within the existing building located at 1629 Ordway. The proposed permit to operate as a medical cannabis manufacturing facility is not consistent with the general plan, and approval of use does not provide a suitable environment for various types of industrial uses. In addition, the requested permit for the use does not protect existing users from adverse impacts of harmless uses cannabis, especially since it is located so close to neighborhoods and schools, and it does not appear to have adequate off-street parking or loading, which leads me to believe that any overflow of cars will possibly spread into the residential neighborhood. I do not approve of this permit request for the conditional use permit to operate a medical cannabis manufacturing facility at 1629 Ordway. I am not in town on Monday, May 18th, to attend, however, I did want to add my perspective on the CUP request that I'm against. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Anne Lou. This comment is from Mark O. "I am 76 with hundreds of other seniors and a church across Oceanside Boulevard from LLC cannabis. How will that be mitigated from SW prevailing breezes... Oh, southwest prevailing breezes, which come directly from where this business will be? Peacock Hillside seniors, perhaps the church will not abide any order." This comment comes from Eric Aliri. "Approval of the CUP could send a clear signal that Oceanside has no intention of adequately permitting or regulating cannabis businesses. And if an applicant just waits long enough, the city will give a license to anyone. The grounds for denial are indisputable and include a suspension of their state license by the California Department of Public Health detailed in a letter dated April 17th describing multiple violations, including inadequate security and included in the May 18 staff report, which originally recommended denial. Failure to meet multiple locational requirements, the proposal location is less than 1,000 feet from residences, another regulated use, and 350 feet from St. Margaret's Church. Staff concludes that there will be no impacts is not based on fact. Homeless and loitering are already an issue along the Sprinter track and in the business park. The cannabis businesses throughout the county have been victims of armed robberies. A thorough analysis of this potential, given the applicant's plans make that highly potent THC vape carthages, was not included. The proposed location is in violation of the Oceanside Gateway Business Park CCNRs, and their board has requested you deny this application. Ignoring property owner rules and recommendations sets a dangerous precedent. As a resident within the public notice area, the applicant's attempts at public outreach was insufficient and misleading. I received their January 24, 2020, open house notice, which implied they were already permitted and to come by and ask questions. I came by at 9:00 a.m., waited 45 minutes, and no one was there. Then got a call that afternoon from the applicant where I expressed my concerns. I never heard from her again, nor were my concerns included in any public documents of the applicant. Granting a CUP is an unsuitable location to the applicant who has demonstrated..." This message comes from Rebecca Rapp. "Good evening, planning commissioners. Once again, we're facing the dilemma of locating a marijuana factory next to a church and residential neighborhood. If I understand correctly, your main job is to help utilize the land in our city to the best of your ability according to the law and code. This proposal is in direct violation of the general plan. This location has inadequate parking and loading zones make it impossible for large trucks to maneuver. Most importantly, this location is located next to a residential zone and across the street from a church. By approving this marijuana facility, you'd be sending a message to the community that pot is your priority. I would urge you to follow the general plan and send a message that you won't let the pot industry dictate your actions. Thank you, Becky Rapp." This comes from Terri Ann Skelly. "Good evening, planning commission members. Regarding the land use decision for the pot factory at 1629 Ordway, it is directly across from a church and a dance studio, residences, and many pre-existing businesses that do not want this business nearby, and feel that the city's land use regulations also support this. It is extremely inappropriate time to be enabling the manufacturing of marijuana products that most often consist of vaping devices. COVID-19 attacks the lungs and is a serious threat to those smoking and vaping marijuana. Thank you for your consideration regarding appropriate uses for the property in Oceanside and denying the CUP. Terri Ann Skelly, a parent who also works in Oceanside." Kelly McCormick submitted a written comment today, and she also provided a voicemail. I will be reading her comment, and if time allows, playing her voicemail. "Planning commissioners, according to the city's land use regulations, the CUP for the Left Coast marijuana business in the Oceanside Gateway Business Park must be denied. The proposed location is less than 1,000 feet from St. Margaret's Church, a dance studio, and residences, all of which disqualify it for consideration at this site. In addition, the objective of the land use element is to minimize conflict with adjacent or related land uses. Since marijuana businesses are prohibited by the Oceanside Gateway Business CCNRs, and since the Business Park Board has requested denial of this application, this would create conflict rather than minimizing it. Numerous homeowners next door also have written to oppose this business. Finally, this particular business has a troubling reputation, including a suspension of their state license due to multiple violations. Thank you for your consideration, Kelly McCormick."
I'm calling about Agenda Item Number Four of the Oceanside Planning Commission, and my name is Kelly McCormick. I'm a parent of two teenagers, and I run a youth mentoring program. I support the staff recommendation to deny the CUP for this marijuana manufacturing business for a number of reasons. As stated, because they already have been spouting the law and operating illegally, which has been noticed by the city and by the California Department of Public Health, and because they further normalize the marijuana industry, and this is hurting our young people and having a negative impact on their ability to meet their full potential and develop in a healthy and drug-free way.
Hi, I would like to leave a message for Item Number Four on the Planning Commission Agenda for May 18th. "Good evening, Oceanside Planning Commissioners. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a mother and community volunteer. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff for their recommendation to deny the marijuana project facility at 1629 Ordway. The applicant, Left Coast, has received a notice of violation from both city and state. The manufactured cannabis safety branch from the Department of Public Health has also sent a notice of violation. With this information, it is clear that the applicant is not in compliance with any law. When situations arise and you are asked to make decisions, often situations are unclear, but in this situation, the facts are clear and state findings are accurate. As a mother concerned with the health and safety of our youth, I urge you to support staff and deny the project. Thank you."
Yes, my name's Kevin Kelso. I'm calling about the CUP 19-00020 for the cannabis manufacturing at 1629 Ordway. I own the unit at 1644 Ordway, which is right down to the same building. I am definitely not in favor of this going into that building. I just purchased in that building a year ago just because of what is in that location, and that is not something that I would have wanted or I would have bought into if I knew that was going to be there. So, anyways, I will send you an email confirming that, and if you have any questions, you can reach me at area code 760-522-2548. Again, that's Kevin Kelso, and I own at 1644 Ordway. Thank you. Bye.
I also wanted to point out that Mr. Kelso also submitted a written comment that was not read into the record.
City clerk, this is... Becky Walker, I sent an earlier message, and I wish that you could delete it, I hope. I meant to address the Oceanside City Council meeting and made a mistake and said I was calling the Lemon Grove Planning Commission. So, I'd like to start over again. Hello, Oceanside City Council. I would like to support staff's recommendation to deny the CUP at 162 Ordway, the applicant, Left Coast, LLC, for a manufacturing operation there. I understand this project, and the applicant had been operating a manufacturing facility at the same site illegally and was issued a notice of violation from the California Department of Public Health, manufactured cannabis safety branch, and operated within the city illegally without a permit. So, I would support denial as staff recommended. I do not believe that bad actors should be rewarded. Thank you so much, and please excuse my earlier mistake.
Hello, this is Barbara Gordon calling. I am calling in regard to Item Four on the agenda. I work with Latino youth. I run a youth group, and in behalf of our Latino families, I applaud and I agree with the city staff in denying the CUP for the manufacturing of marijuana business that is located at 1629 Ordway. Their notice of violation from the California Department of Public Health by operating without a permit is reason enough to not allow this business to ever obtain a CUP permit. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Gordon also submitted a comment that was not read into the record. I also have two written comments and three voicemails that were submitted after the noon deadline. If the chair would permit, I can read those out loud and play those.
Go ahead.
All right. This comment comes from Michael J. Altie. "The proposed project should be denied because the city cannot legitimately make the required findings in zoning ordinance Section 4105 that the proposed location of the conditional use will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity, nor can the city make the required findings under Section 3605 that the project will not impair nearby properties. Further, the project would be inconsistent with several policies contained in the city's general plan land use element, including Policy 1.11B that land uses shall not negatively impact surrounding conforming uses. As previously explained, the proposed project is already prohibited from operating at the proposed location and would generally generate adverse impacts and conflicts with the surrounding area, residents, and businesses, including the Oceanside Gateway Business Park, such as tremendously increased insurance costs for the association. We submitted a letter to you on Friday and previous letters discussing all of these and other issues in detail. Thus far, city staff appears to be ignoring the concerns and comments of the association and other property owners and residents. The staff report fails to address the project's adverse impacts and incompatibility with the surrounding land uses and fails to discuss relevant general plan policies. Likewise, the city staff report fails to even discuss the applicant's prior violations of state and city law and how the applicant has addressed these violations, if they have. The city must therefore postpone any consideration of the project until it provides clear and complete information about the status of the prior violations of the city and state law, including CDPH's suspension of the applicant's state license. In summary, the comments and evidence provided by the association and other members of the public demonstrate that the project, in fact, would be detrimental. The rest of Mr. Altie's comment is in opposition." This comment comes from John Barone. "Dear Chairman and Commissioners, I would like to address the safety of this project. The applicant has already been cited by the Bureau of Cannabis Control for not operating by state regulations. What they are proposing is to extract THC from marijuana. This process is dangerous and has the possibility of exploding. The equipment will be very expensive and has to be maintained. With this applicant already cutting corners, I have grave concerns that it will not maintain the equipment and put the surrounding businesses and community at risk from explosion."
Hello, I would like to make a comment to be read at the Planning Commission about CUP 00020. That C like cat, U like up, P like paw. My name is Leslie Brown, and I have a neighboring business in the same business park. I want to voice my support for Left Coast LLC CUP. I believe the staff made a good recommendation for approval. With the current economic troubles, I feel it would help bring revenue to the city. Thank you for your time. Goodbye. Goodbye.
Hi, my name is Karen Ottenz. I'm a longtime resident of Oceanside. I'd like this message to be played at the Planning Commission. I would like to make a comment about Left Coast LLC. I want to voice my support for them, for Left Coast LLC, CUP. I went by the location, seems like the perfect location for a cannabis manufacturer. Thank you for listening. Bye.
I'd like this to be played at the Planning Commission. The subject is of Left Coast LLC's project. My name is Timothy, and I'd be honored to speak in favor of the Left Coast LLC's project. I've done some research and asked plenty of questions. The project, the location of the project is perfect. Barrier is in distance, but in a safe location for the intent of the project. And as a veteran myself, a veteran-owned company in a veteran-dense region would be a great thing. It would safely bring a large boost in the revenue needed to help us take care of what and who is important to us as a community. A company that takes pride in enriching the community through more jobs and revenue is exactly what we need. The choice is simple. Thank you for your time.
That concludes the public comments that were received.
Great, thank you. I had a comment, Mr. Robbins, if you wouldn't mind staying here for a minute. We heard lots of good comment, some in opposition, some in support. To those in opposition, I heard a couple of recurring comments about the criticism lodged at the applicant for its past history with its state licensing and operating without the local licensing and permit in place prior to tonight. And some of the comments we heard in opposition expanded on that and said, well, staff didn't include any of that in, at least in the staff report. Can, is accurate to say, or can you address the analysis that was done, maybe not in writing, but in the background, and how that weighed into staff's recommendation?
Chair Rosales, Commissioners, there is an analysis in the staff report that references the violation as well as the decision that the city made in July of this year to grant the renewal of the local license.
Okay. I'll look for that, so I can reread that while I switch over. Commissioner Crayhill, you have a question?
Just the, it's, just to be clear, because I think this was mentioned a few times in the public comments, is staff recommending denial or approval of this applicant?
Commissioner Crayhill, Commissioners, the city and staff is requesting, is recommending approval.
I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that, because I think that was misinformation that was sometimes, but a few times in the comments, I know, for those listening at home, to make sure that it wasn't, that was clear.
Yeah, thank you. I heard the same several times, so thank you for that question.
I think some of those comments were old, is why that happened.
That could very well be, right.
Have we closed the public meeting?
We have, we still have the opportunity to go to the applicant for any rebuttal. I didn't hear anything that could warrant rebuttal, but at this point, yes, I would, the public hearing or the public input is closed at this point. So we're at deliberation, and I would still offer the applicant, if they want to weigh in with any comments that they hear, that opportunity, but public portion is done at this point.
Thanks.
Commissioner Palma?
Thank you. I guess I kind of, I'm a little bit stumped on this one. I mean, I, I have really, really not that many concerns about the actual operation, manufacturing, how the city's going to handle the building and the improvements, the parking, the fumes, all that stuff is pretty regulated, and I'm sure that it'll all be taken care of. I actually support cannabis medically and actually recreationally, as far as that goes. But what my biggest concern is, is why this, this Left Coast LLC was able to rent, lease, buy whatever they did with this building in this park that doesn't allow it, that has a CCNR that says that they don't want it, that the property owners around them are against it. So I'm stumped on that, as to like, why this has even gone this far? And how can you actually have a building in a place that has a CCNR that says you're not supposed to be there? I mean, in residential communities, you have a CCNR, and it's, it holds true with what you're going to do with your house or your building, and here it seems like it's been ignored. So I kind of, that's my biggest question mark with this project, is why this has gone this far? And then now the city's saying it's behind it and supports it. So I guess the CCNR doesn't hold water?
Chair and Commissioners, in regards to the CCR, as our attorney mentioned earlier, the city doesn't get involved with enforcing CCRs. It's my understanding that the application was submitted prior to the adoption of the CCRs. So the CCRs came after the fact, as I understand it. CCRs can be changed, CCRs, the enforcement of CCRs is up to the HOA. Some CCRs can be found to be illegal or inconsistent with state law. So again, the CCR issue is up to the HOA to enforce, and it is, it's a potential impediment. You heard from the applicant, they hope to come to a resolution otherwise. In terms of the, in terms of the violation, that's, that's why our original recommendation was for denial. We were thinking that with that violation, that the local license should be denied, or could be denied, I guess would be a better way to put it. And then we talked to the applicant, and the city is comfortable with the application. So this, this is an application for a conditional use permit, and so we should be looking at the impacts that a conditional use permit requires us to analyze, impacts to adjacent businesses, neighbors, and also the locational waiver, because it's a regulated use. And that's the distance from the church and the residences and other regulated uses. So those are the two criteria. Going back to the local license, the city, I think some of the comfort level with the city was that we renew the license annually. So if there's a problem with their operation or problem in the future, the city has the recourse to deny the local license, even if the conditional use permit is approved.
Commissioner Crayhill?
Well, I wanted to actually essentially tee off of the city planners' comments there. You know, the locational requirements is probably our biggest point of concern for what we're deciding here today. You know, and I think the two main kind of points that you bring up when you're talking about the locational requirements are whether it's going to promote an over-concentration of a regulated use in a certain area, contributing to blight and things like that. Obviously, can't be the case here, since there's no other uses that are essentially on this level. Obviously, there's some, you know, massage was mentioned, but that's not really concentrated there, and to protect residential, and of course, there is residential nearby, but there's no public sales or interaction at the door here. So the impact on residential just seems completely negligible to me. It would be similar to any other industrial business, and this is an industrial park. Furthermore, the, this is the exact geographic location that I think was envisioned by the policymakers when we put in the cannabis regulations in the city. I mean, this is, it was, they talked about east of the, east of the five in an industrial area. Well, there's only a few of those areas in the city. This was one of them, though, I think was explicitly even mentioned as being a good location for that. So, you know, I think it's a good point, it's not our job to litigate the CCNRs. That's something that, you know, kind of, leave that to the rest, you know, but this is an industrial park, this is an industrial use, so it seems compatible with the rest of the park. And I want to ask you something that actually was brought up in one of the comments, and again, it was something that was, I guess, a dated piece of information, was that Oceanside Ale Works used to be in this industrial park as well, a brewery and one that also served beer at its taproom, which is no longer there, it is no longer in the park. But I find it interesting that we're hearing from a lot of, some of the neighbors, because I think it was notable that at least one of the other users that are in the park said that they support this, but other neighbors who were okay with a brewer in a taproom in the same park that had people coming in, drinking, and things like that at their door in public, but this would not have any public interaction. So I find some of those concerns to be a little outweighed by that fact as well. So for those reasons and others, I think that this would be a good use, and I support this project.
Thank you for those comments. If I could clarify, Planner Jeff, they are not operating at the moment until they've done the tenant improvements and they have this, this action and the city council's action in place?
Chair and Commissioners, it's my understanding they have ceased operation in regard to the prior violation, notice of violation from the state, and they have assured us that they will not operate until they are in compliance with all necessary licenses and permits.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioner input? Commissioner Busk?
Yeah, I couldn't let it go, sorry. Throughout the plan, and this is for planning staff, throughout our blueprints, there's a title saying medical cannabis manufacturing and retail. Retail scattered throughout this plan. If we approve this plan tonight, are we also approving a retail?
Commissioner Busk, Commissioners, no, that is a typo that was on the plans. The applicant was asked several times to remove any reference to retail, but unfortunately, some still made it through to the final set. The application does not approve any retail at this location. The applicant is not allowed to submit a retail local license because the city has reached the two cap that is allowed per the municipal code. So as of right now, the facility would not even qualify for a retail.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have a comment on what I think the applicant, we have, I think we have an applicant here who is not necessarily a good faith applicant. We've done one of these marijuana facilities before, they were good faith applicants, they came in, got all their licensing upfront, they waited until every, all their ducks were in a row before they finalized and started their business. These guys are women, these people haven't, obviously have not done that. And my concern is that if we have this particular facility in that place in town, we're going to be faced with a significant increase in greenhouse gases. Now, last week, we spent a lot of time talking about greenhouse gases coming from a hotel complex. The extraction for, of THC, you can do it a number of ways. The least impact on the, on the environment is a water extraction, very low efficiency because THC is oil-based. It's an oil. Water doesn't take it out very well. The next, the next least environmentally, or most environmentally friendly, it would be an ethanol extraction. Again, ethanol is not, doesn't mix with oil very well, it's not a very good extraction. The third and the final extraction process that I know about, and I'm a chemist, is high-pressure CO2. Both ethanol and CO2 are greenhouse gases. And in our plan, we were, we call for carbon scrubbers, which is absolutely the way it should be. That's good. I came from the baking, or part of my industrial career was the baking industry. When you have an oven, like a Nabisco oven, baking tons and tons of product every hour, your biggest atmospheric contaminant is ethanol, which comes off of the crackers from the brewing process. One of the major expenses right now in a Nabisco bakery is scrubbing that ethanol out of the exhaust stacks from the ovens. It's a million-dollar per oven installation for the scrubbers, and then it's a million to two million dollars a year to maintain the scrubbers. And if you don't maintain them, for the most part, nobody knows, other than a state, a big manufacturing facility like that, the state comes by and looks at it. So we spent a lot of time last week talking about greenhouse gases. We haven't talked about greenhouse gases from this facility at all, because they say they have no emissions. I'm sorry, they don't appear to be good faith operators. I don't think it'll be a no emissions facility. It's marginal as far as approving the CUP anyway, as far as I'm concerned. And I understand that the CCNR is a civil matter, it's not a matter for us, but I think we can still take it into consideration. And because of that, and the fact that this does not appear to be a good faith applicant, I'm going to be opposed to it. Thanks.
Thank you. And if I could chime in, so Commissioner Busk, I'm with you on the issue of good faith, most certainly. It concerned me that the applicant proceeded before having everything in place, and while we've reached a milestone now, and they, they've, they've accomplished what they needed to accomplish beforehand, and staff has looked at this and so forth, and this type of business meets the ordinance, and we have, we have the waiver built into the ordinance, so we have the pieces in place. You know, I will say that if we were to see a similar applicant in the future who began operations prior to getting the permits in place and so forth, I would not support that one. So I hesitate, I would hesitate to set precedence on any issue, whether it's this or another, but I will state that if we, if I saw another one like this that came through that operated prior to getting everything, I wouldn't support that one. So this one otherwise meets the marks that we were looking for. Commissioner Crayhill hit it right on the nail, the head on the nail, the nail on the head, that this industrial location actually does match with what the intent was for that ordinance to begin with. So we've arrived at that point where I think we've put the pieces together. It was a little bumpy getting there, but I think we've reached that point. And so on that basis, I can support this applicant and their intent. Any other comments? Commissioner Crayhill?
I just wanted to briefly explore the greenhouse gas emissions issue, because obviously that's something that I was very concerned about with the last project, and the primary reason I opposed it. And I don't know if staff's able to do this right now, but, you know, I mean, this is issuing a categorical exemption under SEQA. It's one of the things that we're talking about tonight. Under the, I think the main crux of the point that Commissioner Busk was bringing up, that the extraction method that is being purported to be used is not the one that we may, that may end up being used? Is, would that be a correct interpretation of what you're trying to get at?
No, no, they're saying they will use non-volatile extraction. Non-volatile extraction is high-pressure CO2, ethanol, or water. And it's the non, it's the high-pressure CO2 which can exhaust tremendous amounts of carbon dioxide during, after the extraction or during the extraction process, and the same thing with ethanol.
And you, sorry.
Those gases have to be scrubbed out of the exhaust room, of the room, and that's a very expensive process.
When you say tremendous amount, are we talking about things that would reach the thresholds that would require, I mean, the other, the other project, the reason why greenhouse gas emissions were an important issue is that we were talking about thresholds that we're actually able to look at under SEQA, because they had an EIR that we were addressing. This is, staff is seeing that there's a categorical exemption because it doesn't meet those thresholds. So it seemed to imply that staff doesn't think there's a possibility, but I don't know if they know, and I definitely don't know, if the amount of CO2 could potentially reach those. Do you have any sense of that?
The raw CO2 coming out of the process would exceed the SEQA requirement. However, our specification says all of that will be carbon scrubbed out of the effluent tract prior to the effluent, the air being exhausted from the building. So if the process that's described in the blueprints is followed religiously, then it would not fall into the SEQA requirements.
So.
My concern is we have an applicant who doesn't appear to necessarily track with the law so much, and that in fact, those scrubbers will be allowed to blind, contaminate, and not do their job.
If I, if I could weigh in, if the, if the scrubbers are of a particular size, they would have had to receive a permit from Air Pollution Control District, and so they would need to operate within the thresholds of that permit, which means they would, they would need to be maintained. So maybe that would be a question for the applicant. Applicant, if you're, if you're hearing our conversation, we're deliberating the issue of the carbon scrubbers and the emissions from your location. Did you have to receive, did you have to apply for, and did you receive an, a permit from the Air Pollution Control District, which is a county entity that issues permits for your carbon scrubber? Or is the size so small that that's not required? Or is the size so small that that's not required?
This is Colton. Camer. Camer Lee, so again, the attorney for the applicant. I think your question is, did we have to get any kind of a permit for the air scrubbers related to any gases related to non-volatile extraction? We have not. There are, you know, local and state licensing requirements and conditions of approval that the project does have air operations and air quality systems in place. Understand everybody's concern about the environment, and the applicant will comply with whatever regulatory structure their operating under.
Thank you. So in essence, they could not operate the carbon scrubbers unless they were, unless there was a determination from the Air Pollution Control District that they in fact would have to have a permit, they could not operate those. So her point is, they will get all, they will actually be required to get all permits aside from the ones being talked about tonight for any other activities that we don't regulate.
If you don't mind, and I'll just, again, Commissioner Busk, thank you for bringing up those points, I really do appreciate them. And I think the good faith actor question for me is sated by the fact that the city has conditioned annual inspections, that we have the ability to pull the license annually. So if they aren't living up to these things, that we'd be able to stop them from continuing to damage.
Correct. Any other questions, input, deliberation from Commissioners? Seeing none, I appreciate the good comments back and forth, some good thoughts in deliberation tonight, so I'm looking for a motion from anybody who's willing to offer one.
I've already said I'm supportive, so I might as well go ahead and make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I move that we confirm issuance of Class 1 categorical exemption per CEQA, Article 19, Section 15, 301 CE, existing facilities, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020-P14 recommending City Council approval of conditional use permit CUP 19-00020, and a waiver of locational criteria for a proposed medical cannabis manufacturing facility at 1629 Ordway.
Thank you, I'm looking for a second.
I would second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, then by raise of hands, who's in support of the motion? I see three hands up in support of. Those that are opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. And it looks like we have three in support and three denying the motion. City Planner?
Where's Susan?
Chair and Commissioner, so in the event of a tie, the first thing I would suggest is that you get some negotiation between each other as to how you could come to a decisive vote. Not to advocate, but generally speaking, are there conditions that we can put on this that would assuage some of the concerns, whether it's inspections, or permits, or et cetera? If you cannot come to a decisive vote, then we can continue it because you have an absent Commissioner based on illness and not on a recusal. So she could participate in your next hearing. And again, if it's a 3-3 vote, and that's where it sits, that's what we'll do, is we'll just continue it to your next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, appreciate that. So we have a motion that didn't modify any of the conditions or findings in the resolution, so I would look to the Commissioners who are opposed to the motion to make a suggestion to modify if they would like, or any other alternative motion at this point. Commissioner Busk?
You know, it looks to me like I don't, maybe I don't have enough information on this one, because on Condition 15, we say type 6 non-bottle manufacturing facilities shall comply with CBC Chapter 3, et cetera, et cetera. High-pressure CO2 extraction may require classification as a high-hazard H2 occupancy-based system pressure and/or volume. However, the applicant has never told us whether in fact they're going to have high-pressure CO2 extraction or not. Maybe they're not. Maybe we need to continue this for additional information and wait until our missing Commissioner comes back and rehear the, with additional information, rehear the case.
I'm in favor of that option as well.
Can we make a motion to that extent then, just to continue this? Before we do that, any other input from those?
I'd be interested in hearing from the two Commissioners who voted to deny. I mean, is there other information that the applicant can bring, like Commissioner Busk has brought forward that would help you make a decision on this if you're advocating for a continuance? If it's a continuance just to deny it, then that's not necessarily supporting a continuance. What is the reasons for denial, or is there any reason that you'd be able to support this at any point? Otherwise, we're stringing them along.
Yeah, to that point, so we heard a singular issue related to, and it's a good question about the CO2 and the extraction. Are there any other concerns, Commissioner Goodkind or Commissioner Morrissey, that you'd like to raise before we take perhaps an alternative motion?
I would say the bad faith, what Commissioner Busk talked about, and then the number of people that were against it, the CRs that were part of the property, that's just, for starters, I can think off the top of my head.
Okay, Commissioner Goodkind?
My concerns, look, I voted for Prop 64, and I want to see cannabis industry established in the city, all aspects of it. I'm a medical cannabis user myself. I have concerns about this applicant's history of compliance, and I am also, and taking into consideration the CCNRs, which I do think we should be at least entitled to consider in our deliberation.
Okay.
And I'd be interested to see how that specific issue evolves.
So I'm hearing the extraction CO2 issue, issue like we've touched on already about the history and the criticism lodged against the applicant, and then.
CCNR.
CCNRs, thank you. Which we did cover, but I think I'm leaning, well, I won't lean anywhere, but I will ask for an alternative motion if somebody wants to make it that could capture all of that and/or the inclusion of the missing Commissioner, if that, if that makes sense. We've got a lot of things on the table right now, so if somebody wants to tee up a motion.
Can I just say one more thing specifically about approving this particular application? The waiver of the location criteria, there are two things in the waiver of the location criteria which, I said it was marginal when I first talked, when I first talked. And for me, it's marginal for two reasons. One is it's not contrary to the value of the local properties, and we have a lot of testimony from adjacent landowners, building owners, who do not want this facility there believing that it will cause their, their value to go down. And then the second is, and this is more of a, kind of a philosophical, I guess, the distance from housing and church. I understand the distance by, by foot is a lot further than the criteria that we set up. But why do we set up, do we set up the criteria for these kinds of distances by foot traffic? Or do we set up these kinds of distances by air traffic? My standpoint for manufacturing facilities, you tend to set up the distances because of distance through the air. You're worried about air contamination. We don't have a retail facility here, don't anticipate that ever happening. If it was retail, then absolutely it would be foot traffic. But this particular facility is not foot traffic. It's a manufacturing facility where we need to consider the distance by air. And certainly we have two non-manufacturing uses, the church and the residences on the other side of the tracks, drain tracks, which we have to consider as a body, the air, the potential of the air contamination. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Again, I've advocated that somebody try to capture all this in a motion that we can vote on and see some kind of action tonight. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I'll move that we continue this to our next Planning Commission meeting, when we hopefully have a full Commission present. Is that a sufficient motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to continue the item until the next potential meeting. City Planner? Any other deliberation before we vote?
I just would like to have, once we do have that, if we do vote for the continuance, then I'd like to have information on what Commissioner Busk was bringing up, like to have a little bit more information on the CCNRs and the property owner thing. Like, that's still kind of, you know, the way it was explained to me from the City Planner, it's not something we can be talking about, it's not something we can be voting on, but in a way, that was my biggest negative on this project, was that. So I'd like to have a little bit more information about this, if it's a civil thing between the leaf, the golden leaf and the business park, then I kind of want a little bit more information on that too, then when we bring it back next time.
Yeah, and I thank you for doing that. I was going to do that in the summary as well, that we give direction to staff. We have a motion on the floor with a second that's simply to continue the item, but in terms of direction, I think you've, staff, you've heard some additional analysis and input on the CCR issue, the issue and expansion in more detail on the CO2 and the footprint of that facility in terms of greenhouse gases. A little bit more, if possible, on the history of the applicant, again, acknowledging that it's been a little bit of a bumpy ride getting here tonight. They've had some hiccups, and if we could expand on that to some degree, I don't know how exactly, I think it's been clear a bit as to what happened, but maybe expand on that. And did I miss anything? But I think, I think that mostly is it.
I think, excuse me if I could, on the CCNR issue, it would be really helpful for me to know what the individual input is from the other occupants of that building and not just the association, because you never know who's on a board, or you know, how many people even are on that board, and whether they truly are representative. So if the association has any data like that, and they actually surveyed their tenants, it would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a very good point. So maybe not specifically a presentation from the CCR board, but maybe if the applicant can, or staff could pull that information together, again, an expansion of what we're talking about when we refer to the CCR, so, issue. Staff, is that enough direction at this point? Okay. So thank you. Again, we have a motion and a second to continue this until the next convenient date, and hopefully we're going to have all the Commissioners present at that point. I'm ready to vote. Everybody else, if we could raise our hands in support of that motion? Those opposed? Looks like we have a six to zero. City Planner, to continue this item until the next convenient date that can be scheduled? Staff, Ms. Cervantes, thank you for your patience tonight and for your presentation. We look forward to seeing you again next time. Okay. Moving on, we have a discussion item tonight. Item five on the agenda is an update by Shannon Vitale on the short-term rental program. This is an item that was, that's been in place almost a year now, the short-term rental ordinance, and as was envisioned when it was adopted by the City Council, staff would do periodic updates on how that program is going. I read through your memo, Shannon, and there's a lot of good information in there. And so with that, if you would, go ahead and start your presentation, we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Rosales, Planning Commissioners. I'm Shannon Vitale with the Planning Division. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the City of Oceanside Short-Term Rental Program. As you know, the short-term rental ordinance was adopted by the City Council last June, and upon certification by the California Coastal Commission, it became effective citywide in October of 2019. The city deferred enforcement of the ordinance until November 1st to allow a short-term rental program and application process to occur. Additionally, a full-time code enforcement officer was hired to help implement the short-term rental ordinance. On March 13th of this year, in response to the Governor's Executive Order, the City Manager's Office sent a letter to all short-term rental operators informing them that due to the COVID-19, short-term rentals were only allowed to operate for the following reasons: to provide housing for essential workers, to provide a homeless shelter, quarantine housing, or emergency housing. Code Enforcement and the OPD responded to inquiries and violations of this Governor's Executive Order and established protocols to help enforce the public order. These restrictions were lifted on June 12th, and per the revised San Diego County Health Order, short-term rentals are now allowed to operate and be open for recreation and leisure stays, as long as the property complies with the state's COVID-19 industry guidance for hotels, lodging, and short-term rentals. Additionally, short-term rental operators must post a safe reopening plan that demonstrates how the short-term rental operator will implement measures to ensure the safety of guests and Despite the current pandemic, the city continues to receive and process short-term rental applications. The two tables on this slide show the number of applications staff has received as of August 1st. The first table provides data on short-term rental applications. Staff has received 506 applications, and of those, 107 have been approved. A majority of the applications are in a pending status and are still under review by Code Enforcement and/or the Fire Department. Due to the previous COVID restrictions, many operators were forced to postpone site inspections. Additionally, upon inspection of many of the properties, unpermitted construction was observed. These property owners were told to apply for building permits for any unpermitted work. A short-term rental permit will not be issued until the proper building permits are obtained. All of these applications are included in the under-review line, so about 394. In response to the site inspection, staff has received an influx of building permit applications to rectify unpermitted work and bring short-term rental properties into compliance. The second table on this slide shows short-term rentals that are exempt from applying for an STR permit. This would include North Coast Village, hosted units, and other properties that qualify for an exemption pursuant to the Section 24.4.2 of the short-term rental ordinance. This includes HOAs that have 50 or more units and are gated and provide a 24-hour onsite manager or surveillance. These units are still required to register with the city and submit a TOT application. This table provides a breakdown on the location of short-term rentals, including the exempt units. This includes all of the applications received to date. As shown here, nearly half of the STRs are located in downtown District 5. This accounts primarily because of North Coast Village. The RT district makes up the second highest percentage with 14% of the total STRs. As shown on this slide, STRs and TOT accounts are indicated by the green circles and boxes. A majority of the STRs are located west of I-5, with nearly 75% located in the coastal According to data provided by the Code Enforcement Division, 416 complaints have been received since November 1st, which was the effective day of enforcement. This slide provides a breakdown of the number of complaints received for each reporting period. Code Enforcement mentioned that the second reporting period had an increase in complaints, primarily due to enforcement of the COVID regulations. And then this slide, I can bring you up. So if the link were, yeah, here we go. So this is a website that staff is working on, it's an interactive map viewer that is available to the public. So basically, this shows, again, it's the same slide from before, but it shows all of the short-term rental properties that have applied for a permit, and if the public, they can click on any of those attributes to pull up contact information, property information, things like that. So staff is continuing to improve this website, it's a work in progress, but GIS updates this monthly with all the new applications that have been received. And the second website is a city-managed website that has, it's our dedicated short-term rental page, and it And it includes the application people can apply online, as well as the Good Neighbor Policy, a copy of the Short-Term Rental Ordinance, and other documents that are relevant to the short-term rental program. And again, this is a work in progress. Staff is continuing to make improvements and updates to the website. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I am joined by Zach. He's our dedicated short-term rental code enforcement officer. So if there's any questions on the inspection process or violations, things like that, he can help answer those.
Thank you, Shannon. I had a question about, yeah, if you leave that up for a second, the two, I call them public access links. Where is that found on the city's website?
Yeah, I can.
Just in general, is that on the?
Yeah, I can, I'll just tell you. So on the city homepage, there's the city GIS map viewer. It's under the "How do I?" And then there's a whole list of city GIS maps. So it's titled "Short-Term Rental Map Viewer." So that's how people access the first website. The second website is housed on the Finance Division page because that's where all the short-term rental permits are received and processed.
Okay, great, thank you. Good stuff. And then my second question, maybe that's for your cohort over there. How's it do? You mentioned the complaints in the second quarter were mostly COVID. Come on up, sir. I forgot, your name again?
This is Zach Barnes, our dedicated short-term rental enforcement officer.
Good evening, Zach.
Great, hi, Zach.
So the types of complaints, aside from COVID, that you're, the city's experiencing, if you could maybe tell us what those are, maybe the second and third most frequent types that are being lodged?
Good evening, Chairman Rosales, commissioners. So the most common complaint is short-term rental operating without a permit. And after that, it would be loud parties, excessive noise complaints.
Yeah, that kind of makes sense. Great, any questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Gukon.
I have a question for Zach. How do you monitor the hosted element of short-term vacation rentals? So if somebody, is there any, is there any act of enforcement or it's in response to complaints? I mean, it seems like a hard thing to track.
One tool we have is using Lodging Revs and Muni Revs, our new software, that we can go on there and look at all the advertisements, see if they're offering the entire house or see if the advertisement specifically offers a bedroom within a house. That kind of information would need to be listed for someone to know what they're getting.
So is that something you actively look for, like on a periodic basis? Or to ensure compliance? Or is it complaint-based?
It's both. So I'll proactively look at listings. And when I receive a complaint, I'll look at that specific address. Additionally, we require them to submit an affidavit to the city certifying that it is a hosted unit.
Thank you.
Commissioner Busk?
So these units that have applied for a license, but the license has not been granted, have they stopped their short-term rental activity? Or are some of them continuing to do STRs?
So as long as a short-term rental operation is in the process of ultimately obtaining a, an issued short-term rental permit and that they've submitted their application, we are allowing them to conditionally operate.
Then the follow-up question is, I understand that some of these modifications have taken, say, a three-bedroom house down on the beach and added, so now it's a 10-bedroom house. And unless they completely restructure and go backwards, their chances of having, bringing that into compliance as it currently exists are really pretty small. Is that taken into consideration at all? Or is, like, the success of the application for bringing it into compliance?
So if the unpermitted construction is egregious in nature, then we'll require them to cease operations until the, all the unpermitted work is permitted.
Great, okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Nice job, by the way. I've had some very good compliments of your work from people that live down along the beach. Yeah.
It's great to hear. Any other comments or questions for staff?
And I don't know if this is necessarily for you because it might be more Shannon, but the, I found the zoning, by zoning district slide to be really interesting because that was one of my main concerns when we were going over this, especially the single-family. Do we have any sense of, for the single-family residential ones, how many of those maybe were the under-review still, the approved? Any kind of number? I mean, how many of, I guess, how many of those single-family residential ones were actually on the approved numbers?
So unfortunately, I don't have that data today, but we can delve into that and provide an update.
I'd just love to know, yeah. Like, how many of them are actually, you know, living up to the regulations enough to be able to get approved? Do you have any anecdotal sense of how many single ones in, like, you know, the traditional neighborhoods you've gone by, checked in there, looked pretty good, so that they probably would have gone through and gotten approved?
By zoning, no, it's not something I've sorted in that way.
No worries. Thank you both.
Okay, well, I appreciate the presentation, information, good stuff. And continue the good work out there, Zach. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at the last, nearly the last stage of the meeting tonight. Commissioners report. I'll begin, I just had more of a question for city planner. Louise and I and Kyle are on the ad hoc group for the Brother Benno's consideration of a renewal of their CUP. And we had a couple of meetings, gee, I think going back to last year when the first one started. And then the third planned one was, I think slated to be in May, I want to say, until COVID hit. And so we've been stalling having that last one. And we wanted to have that last one so we could have one, or the public could have one last opportunity to have their input on what we were being considered. So we have, just in this, I'm kind of letting everybody else know that we pushed that off until November. Scott Nightingale's been doing the staff presentations on those. And then Louise teed up an email to Jeff the other day. We would like to see Jeff, if there's any way to get that last meeting scheduled prior to November, if at all possible, mainly because, as Louise pointed out, the business owners in that area, you know, it's not like the issues that were raised in the meetings have gone away. In fact, maybe they've even expanded. And so while, for all good reasons, we've been pushing that third meeting off because of COVID, because we want good public participation, I sure would like to see if there's any way we can do something like we did tonight for this meeting where they could still participate and we could get through that third meeting and then bring something to the commission and eventually to the city council. So that's, that's my piece on that. So I've already stated that. I'm just letting everybody else know. Vice Chair Obama, any reports?
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Rosales. All I have to say is we did get a letter for our referendum for the North River Farms project. If you're not aware of it, it's, it will be L on the ballot. So that's our new little thing. We've been working hard on that, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Crahill?
No report.
No report. Commissioner Busk?
Nothing to add. No, thanks.
Commissioner Gukon?
No report.
And Commissioner Morrissey?
No report.
Okay, you made it too easy tonight. City Planner Jeff, whatever you have for us.
Quickly, your planning commission agenda. August 24th, you have the Matlack variance is scheduled. You also have two condo projects on Cleveland Street, South Cleveland Street. One is 16 condos and one's 14 condos. They're very near each other. Coincidentally, you have two projects on Hellcrest that you're going to get one report, but they're technically two projects. It's the same applicant, two different sites, but very near each other, two different resolutions. But one is for six condos and one is for 12 condos. If we, if we have time, we will try and schedule the item tonight on the Left Coast for August 24th as well. September 14th, right now, we don't have anything. But if we do, I'll do a RENA update. Maybe I can try and do the RENA update, a status update on August 24th as well. But in the near future, we'll give you an update on the latest RENA numbers and what the city is doing in response. Council on August 5th, going backwards, they did approve the cannabis sales tax. It sets out a range. And the ranges are different for cultivation, which has a maximum of 3.5%. And then the other cannabis uses have a maximum of 6%. So if that's a passed on the November ballot, then the council could adopt an ordinance setting the sales tax within that range. Also, on the 5th, the VMT as a SEQA threshold was approved. Council went with the IT version for the screenout on ADTs, the average daily trips. And so that has a higher screenout. More projects would not be subject to SEQA. But other than that change, there was, it was the planning commission recommendation that was adopted. The climate action ordinances were all adopted as proposed. And also, the ADU ordinance was also adopted as proposed. August 19th, council is scheduled to review the inclusionary housing ordinance update, which could affect some housekeeping items like definitions, but also allow for affordable rentals, which the legislature recently allowed. And then on September 9th, the Sunsets Project, which is at Horn and Peerview, is coming back with an addition. It's gone from 76 apartments to 118 apartments. And September 23rd, we have Left Coast scheduled. We'll see if that gets bumped because of the delay tonight. The general plan update, just quickly. The consultant is working on technical studies and background reports and also continued public outreach. They've done some preliminary public outreach, particularly in the Southmore Hills area. And so they're continuing with that. And then they'll be drafting policies for the Southmore Hills in the near future. We anticipate taking the Southmore Hills project to council in November, per direction from them. It wouldn't be for adoption. It's just more for a report or to check in and get comments from them. And then finally, the Brother Benno Standing Committee. As the chair noted, it's been bumped to November 12th. We will look for other ways to move it up forward. The IT department got the okay to upgrade our sound system. So in the near future, hopefully for your next meeting, if not the first meeting in September, we won't have a microphone. It'll be a direct line. When someone calls in, it goes into the PA. So we're hoping that that will improve that. The other technical improvement that IT is looking at is some kind of Zoom-type. Zoom is a brand name, but it's kind of like saying Kleenex, if you know what I mean. Some kind of Zoom-type meeting format where the public could participate live, not in person, but live. They're looking at that. They're still exploring that. So the IT department, city manager's office is keen on making things better. If either of those come through, I think maybe we can move the, or consider moving the Brother Benno's meeting up. We'll keep that in mind. And that's all I had.
Great, man, thank you.
Question for Jeff?
Sure.
It's a procedural question. It's my understanding that when there's a tie at city council, it's an automatic no vote to rejection? That is not the case with the planning commission? I was just, I was just kind of surprised by the response to our tie vote tonight. I didn't know that was, that the instruction was try to deliberate and break the tie rather than it fails.
That's my understanding. I can look into it. But Barbara, isn't that your understanding? That if there's a tie vote at the planning commission and there's an absent planning commissioner, like tonight, who's absent due to sickness, not a recusal, in theory, they can show up at the next meeting and then take, participate and perhaps break the dead, the logjam on the vote?
Yeah, in fact, it's in the bylaws that, the planning commission bylaws, that a tie vote is a, that the motion fails, but it's automatically put on the, on the next agenda for, if, for when there's going to be another planning commissioner there to break the tie. But that's not to say that what, what was done tonight was at all improper. It was because the commission's also free to entertain a motion, as it did, to continue the matter, to obtain more information and bring it back.
I was just curious. I wasn't suggesting it was improper, but thank you for the clarification, both of you.
Commissioner Crahill?
And just for the next time we hear this, we would, if it's my understanding, we would need an actual motion to deny that would then have to pass as well for that to go forward, right? And at that point, you'd want probably findings that you'd want in the, for the motion to deny. Was that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If, just because the motion to approve fails doesn't mean that we're just done. We'd have to actually, you would need us to essentially come back with a resolution to actually deny the CUP, wouldn't you?
I think if we've exhausted all options and then it's a tie, then I view that as a de facto denial. So for instance, hypothetically, if Susan recused herself, then I would have said, well, the project's denied and the applicant would have the right to appeal that. But in this case, we think there's a possible solution to breaking the deadline.
That being said, we could still, even if Susan was here and she had to recuse herself and we got to the same place as we did tonight, I think in my experience on the commission, we can still do what we did. And that is deliberate. If there was some other way to break the tie, we have that opportunity as opposed to just outright denial at that point. Is that, is that a finesse on our part? Or is that, is that, is that true as well?
No, I think that's accurate. And again, from my years of experience, and they're going above 30 now, the way you change the deadline or the logjam is somebody proposes a condition of approval. And that's just the common solution rather than some, one of the yes votes being persuaded to vote denial. That doesn't happen as often.
Right.
Usually, you get some comfort level by adding other conditions that address the concerns. So that's why I suggested you at least discuss that.
No, and I think it was a good discussion. I mean, I think it was, there's some value in bringing this back and having Susan participate and see where it takes us. So I appreciate everybody's input. Okay, unless there's something else, we're adjourned until August 24th. Thank you.